Good afternoon and welcome to the October 21st edition of the Committee at the Hole. We are doing the Budget Department Presentations. I'm going to turn it over to Carrie.
So this evening is the kickoff of our second department presentations. We're going to be having several departments present this evening. We do have next Monday earmarked for some extra time if we need to, if we don't get through everybody this evening. I also wanted to call attention to, I did send out an email last Friday to council answering the questions that were brought up at the last Committee of the Hole that we weren't able to answer at the meeting. So please let me know if you do have any additional questions from that email that I sent last Friday. And I will hand it off to Jenna to start with Community Economic Development.
Oops. All right. Okay, Community and Economic Development. First, I'd like to just start by saying it's my pleasure to be here tonight and have the opportunity to present the Community and Economic Development Biennial Budget. As you can see on this slide, the Community and Economic Development's budget has remained consistent with previous years with one additional ask. And that is $150,000 annually to maintain the downtown cleaning contract to better support our downtown core and the businesses and residents within it. CED's leadership, many are here tonight, actually all of them are here tonight and even beyond the ones on the screen, but we have Matt Herrera, Planning Director, Development Service Director Rob Shuey, Development Engineering Director Brianna Banworth, and Economic Development Director Amanda Free. I thought it was important to recognize these individuals for many reasons, but one is these individuals represent over 40 years of institutional knowledge for the city of Renton. And that's an extreme strength for our department. So as we were looking at the next two years, we took a look at the Renton Business Plan and its goals. And in addition to that, our mission, our department mission. And the two words that we took from both documents was enhance the vitality and livability of the city of Renton. And so as we looked at our next two years, that's exactly what we plan to do, really work hard at enhancing both of those items. So where are we going to start? The one thing we have been talking about internally as a group is we believe that our customer service is great. But we also know that any, anything can be improved. So what we are going to do is take a deep dive into our customer service. As you can see on the slide, there's a number of bullets that kind of show you what we're going to be looking into enhancing. But the one that I kind of wanted to mention is the last bullet, initiate an internal staff-led customer service needs assessment. And the reason why I wanted to bring that up with you is because just in my short time here as administrator, I've talked to many of our staff and they have great ideas on how to enhance customer service, right down to the kind of code document that we, code publishing that we use. So we're going to put together an internal team and really identify cost-effective ways to really up the game in customer service. Next, we are going to take a real nice look at, I think, what Councilmember Perez calls love notes. And one program that we recently inherited was the graffiti abatement program. And this program's really important in the realm of simply showing love for your community care, you know, that the communities cared for by having it clean and well cared for. So we are planning to do two different things this year. We would like to talk with Public Works Maintenance Staff about a potential volunteer program that potentially maintenance could oversee, maybe our department will have to explore that. But the new program that we are going to implement is what we're calling Paint With Purpose. And so studies show that areas that are frequently tagged, if replaced, if that tagging is replaced with just another white wall, that blank canvas really draws that activity. What we want to do is in areas where we have lots of repetitive tagging, we want to take that criminal act and turn that into a love note for the community and place a mural there. And so this will be a partnership with businesses. It could be agencies, it could be residents, it really is kind of wide open. But the program would be to identify these highly tagged areas and turn them into works of art. The next, the next topic here is our enhanced code compliance. This one we plan to, as you know, we, we do this consistently every day, but we do plan a, to, to start in 2025, an initiative that will take that up another notch. Our plan is to do, utilize a grid system to ensure equity and fairness as we head out into the community. The difference, what we don't want to do here though, is take an approach that we're the big hand coming down. What we want to do is make this more of a partnership approach. We're looking into different ways and programs that we could help low-income residents or low-income seniors take care of some of the code compliance issues that are often hard to do, but easy, the, you know, mowing the lawn type code compliance or the excessive trash in your front yard, that kind of thing. So we're, we're going to look into partnership ideas that can really incentivize people that have difficulties doing those minor improvements and really try to make a program out of it. Moving on to planning. Planning has a busy next couple of years and they've had a busy past two years also. The comprehensive plan, as you know, has been marching along and it will be update or adopted soon. We have a requirement to update the critical area ordinance, which is going to be quite a large task. Our annual docket process will be another large task and then just the ongoing permitting and activity, development activity. Moving on to housing, housing for planning will also be a large task for the next two years. We will be working proactively to identify partners for our House Bill 1590 funds to really deliver quality affordable housing to the community. We're going to continue to incentivize and roll out our Pradu program or continue to deliver, I guess it's already been rolled out. Middle housing, again, as you guys, I believe, are all aware of the HB 1110, HB 1337. Again, all of this will be quite a big task for our staff, but required no additional funds for, for our Biennial ask. I wanted to mention a couple of pipeline projects. We have slated the Longakers Redevelopment Master Plan, where we believe will be moving into a much more active phase this coming year. We have the Willowcrest Town Home Phase Two and the Solera Phase Two project also. So both of, all three of those are three very large projects that we hope to see coming down the pipeline. In addition, the Grady TOD site and the sub-area plan. I think the point I wanted to mention here is we are definitely going to be actively exploring opportunities and partnerships with this TOD site to really deliver a Grady Rainier TOD for the community. That will include affordable housing, needed retail, and the transit center in a, in a, with a design that I think everybody will be proud of. Okay, Development Engineering has been working really hard and will continue to deliver the Design and Construction Standing Manual. That is a really important document that helps developers really understand the predictability of developing in Renton. So we're expecting that document to be completed in this Biennial. And then Construction Management and Inspection. This is a very important part of development engineering. And the team has some ideas on how to enhance and expand the services that, that staff, that group of staff currently conduct. So we're, we have that on the slate too. Okay, Economic Development. Again, I've already mentioned our one ask this year is to continue the downtown cleaning contract in the amount of $150,000 annually. That gets during the peak season, we're going to have, that means four days a week. And in the off-season, three days a week for that amount. And we have found, and it has been reported to us, that that has been a very valuable program for our downtown. The Redevelopment Manager, this is one we are ready to fill. We, we need this person and we're ready to fill it. We are broadening the, the role of this person from just downtown to Redevelopment Manager and we're going to focus citywide. We have lots of different initiatives from an economic development and urban planning perspective that this person can help us with and we're ready to start making moves on that. This person will still though, have a high focus on our downtown civic core initiatives. Okay, so continuing on with Economic Development, small business, small and independent business support. We, this is one of our passions. We are going to continue to expand the Small Business Liaison Program, working to get that person more tactfully, tactically implemented into our pre-application process and really help some of those small businesses through that development phase, among other things. We're going to expand the Think-Take Program. We really have enjoyed those. We feel like those are making great connections within the community. So we plan to continue those this year. And then again, we have some great regional partners that we plan to expand and leverage and grow the strength of the forces. That includes the RDP, the Chamber, the list goes on. Business Recruitment, this is when I say the business recruitment, this is more of the large-scale business. We are actively still working with Vertical World with the concept of bringing them to the heart of downtown. And the, the gist there is really all about foot traffic and offering experiential business in our downtown that really draws people to downtown, replacing some of that, the, the, the lack of larger retail that a lot of the cities are experiencing the loss of. We are actively going after Costco and they have shown an interest in us. So we're going to find a home for them. And then Kids Quest Museum has also showed, shown interest in Renton and we're actively looking for a wonderful spot for them. Beyond those three that I wanted to mention, I just kind of felt like it was important to mention our focus is aerospace, that, our business cluster focus is aerospace, healthcare. We are, we obviously are focusing on the professional sport world, but that includes many complementary businesses that we'll be pursuing. Creative economy and again, that experiential business model, like the Topgolf, the, the ones that really bring the foot traffic. I wanted to mention that the creative economy is something that Renton has a great start in and we could really bring this one home with a little focus. So we are going to be actively creating a creative economy program in the next year, two years. This will be, this will be formalized. So by formalizing it, it will be a heavy lift, but I think we can do it with the staff we have. Again, we're going to finalize the five-year Arts and Culture Master Plan, which has been underway. And then our focus on the downtown revitalization will continue. And I just, you know, want to mention that our Main Street program is highly valuable to us and to the downtown. And so I added the four fundamentals of that Main Street program. And so supporting the RDP and accomplishing that and, and will be also one of our missions. Okay, the, the last couple of slides here are about our World Cup Square or right now, what we're going to be calling our Legacy Square. The, the square has not been named. We are going to probably embark on that effort in 2025. But I believe all of you know that this is a partnership with the Rave Foundation, the Sanders Rave Foundation. And our goal is to leverage the, the world's largest sporting event to bring to the citizens of Renton a vibrant gathering hub for many years or generations to enjoy. The, this has been a huge lift for internally for staff. We had to play a lot of catch-up. And so what we did is we developed a interdepartmental team, which included staff from almost every department, CED, Public Works, Parks, Police, and IT. And we have gotten to the point where we're 90% done with the conceptual drawings and we're getting the final drawings ready to roll for the end of the year. The budget, you can see here, we have the items kind of listed over here and the budget we have pinpointed is about 1.1 million with the Gateway renovation, renovation project adding 500. So we're designing those together now. Phase one, we're going to be starting in 2025 and that's going to be basically all the underground work and hardscape and most of the, not most of the final landscaping, but the grass and what, and turf. Phase two will be everything vertical, which would include the stage, the sound system, the screen, what have you. So we did have in our presentation today, we do have a video of what the design looks like. And if you don't mind, I think I will just hit play and you can see. Now this is Gateway Park. And in this area, we have our food trucks or incubator space. And the aerial is really helpful to see the whole thing. So with that, that is the 2025-26 CED Biennial Budget, Budget Presentation.
Any questions from council? Councilmember O'Halloran.
I have several. I'll start sort of where you began, which was the graffiti abatement, replacing or actually enhancing areas that get tagged a lot with murals or other forms of artwork. Is there, is that going to be a competitive process or is the Arts Commission going to lead that? Or are we going to just reach out to local artists and say, hey, come and paint something? What, what do you see that happen? How do you see that happening?
Yeah, we're in the midst of putting the program together. The Arts Commission will be involved. We've kind of explained it internally, more like the Pradu Program where we may go and solicit murals from artists ahead of time. So when we have a situation that comes up, we have the opportunity to already have three or four murals that have already been pre-approved through the Arts Commission process. So that process hasn't been defined yet, but we know it's going to be a partnership with the Arts Commission.
Any other questions from council?
Yes, Council President.
Go ahead, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. It's all very exciting to see how we're prospering and evolving and growing. And I do really appreciate everything that was put together. Reading through our Big Fund Binder here and through your presentation, I do have a question. As we see our city grow, we want to increase affordable housing and things like that. Where do you think CED plays when it comes to investing and supporting social service infrastructure? I hear a lot about the business community and supporting big businesses like Costco and Vertical World, which I'm very excited about, do not get me wrong. But then I'm also hearing unfortunately, like our, you know, state DOC unfortunately is having a hard time getting a probation office out here and experiencing a lot of pushback, right? That our nonprofits and peer, like organizations like Peer Washington don't experience the same prioritization as Costco. That's what I'm experiencing and hearing. And I can be completely off-base with that. And so I take that first and foremost. But where is the role of CED when it comes to the social services infrastructure that we also need to increase as our city grows?
It's a partnership with human services. You're right, it, it, when you're a Costco and you have the funds to just step up and decide yes or no, if you're going to buy the property or lease the building or what have you, it does make it a little easier on those than some of these social services. But it really is a partnership with human services. CED obviously is going to be focusing on the development partnerships for affordable housing, but it's all intertwined. So we'll be working hand in hand with Parks and Human Services.
Thank you. Look forward to that.
Any other questions from council? Let me see if anyone who hasn't asked one has one, then I'll come back to you. Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for the presentation. I have a question regarding the ADUs and how far it's been up to date is when we enroll it. I know you, you have noted here is on page 33, 37, conducted 45 pre-approved ADU meetings. So up to date, how many have we been able to build? Yeah. And then of course, how much do you, how many do you anticipate? Just because I want to see how, if the community is actually being, if this is being used through the community and how we can do the educate.
Well, keep in mind, through the pre-op process, we get a lot of different inquiries, monthly, daily, about people exploring ideas of what they can do with their property. So have we built four? We've built two out of the 43 inquiries.
President.
Yes, Councilmember Albersen.
First off Jenna, thanks for the video. And actually, that came out really well, actually. You, you know my overall thing, but you know, it looked well. Actually, the one thing that kind of stood out to me was under the highlight of budget changes, that one single item increased 100,000 annually to continue. So I don't know how much of a change it was versus the continuation. I, I just found it curious that to you, is that the only highlight of the budget? I mean, it seems like there's something, if you had to pull some other things out that I think are, that you would think are highlights to this particular budget presentation request and that sort of thing, what, what comes to mind? I, I just found it curious that there was that one bullet point as a highlight. It seems like there's some other things that as far as what you're asking or some changes or some.
Right. That I think bullet point was there simply because that is our one additional ask, although it is a reduction to what we had paid in the previous years. But, so that's why that was called out there. Because it was so you could see what the actual financial ask was.
I thought too hard. No problem.
Any other questions from folks who haven't asked? If not, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember O'Halloran.
Thank you. I remember, I remember talking with Chip and others in the past about this grid system for compliance and literally street by street by street. And he and I had, had discussed on several occasions, starting with your repeat offenders. I think the grid by grid is, is fantastic because you will eventually get to everybody. But those, that low-hanging fruit that's always out there, I'm hoping that you'll consider approaching those people first and not necessarily with a soft touch with them.
Agreed. What happens often when you go out and address one issue, there's a lot of finger pointing to other ones in close proximity. And we want to be equitable and fair with this approach. So that is why we actually have pushed it back to March because we do want to take a very strategic approach to that. We do want to help people who may find it hard to, to simply take a large truckload to the dump to get rid of something. And whether it's because physically they can't do it or what have you. So we do want to take a really thoughtful approach, but again, the repeat offenders, they do take a lot of our time and energy. And I agree with you on that statement. Yeah.
One more?
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Council President Prince. To piggyback on Councilmember O'Halloran's question, actually reminded me of something, thank you, was how do you avoid your code compliance system from being abused? Because I've had reports of particularly LGBTQ homeowners being targeted, being targeted by non-LGBTQ homeowners when it comes to code compliance. Now, having that be true or not, it's all hearsay and allegations, but how, what do you do on your end to avoid that abuse?
You're saying that, that the complaint was neighbors complaining to neighbors or?
Or we've, I've had different complaints from different members of the LGBT community, different homeowners seeing that they've had code compliance used. It felt targeted against them from homophobic neighbors. That was their version of events. And so my question is, as more of a larger question, to avoid waste of resources, money, all of that, what does your agency do to combat any possible abuse of code compliance for just like a cranky neighbor when there are really no issue?
Right, right. Well, we are very thoughtful and calculated as we deal with complaints. We do take our time, assuming it's not a life safety issue, to really truly understand the complaint and obviously evaluate it. And then we often discuss internally approach to each particular situation. So what you're suggesting is just not appropriate or tolerated by our department. So if and when we'd ever see that or even have an inkling that that might be part of a situation, I think we would definitely address that code enforcement in a way to ensure that either A, that doesn't continue or we do our best to address the actual code compliance issue. At the end of the day, our goal is code compliance. And code compliance can be done a number of ways and, and the stick is not always the, the most effective way. And I think that's what you're reflecting on is how do we get those lesser issues, meaning code issues, not what you talked about, to be, to come to, up to compliance without any issues. And I think that's really just through a thoughtful approach.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Vaughn and then O'Halloran.
I just wanted to follow up. And in terms of broadening the role to support citywide efforts by the redevelopment manager, how do you envision that in terms of is there additional funding needing to put into that position? Is it different districts, although we're not city districted, right? Kind of what emphasis, which area would you be having the redevelopment manager emphasizing their work?
Yeah. I think as opportunities come up or topics are presented before us, for example, the TOD site. Right now, that is kind of, right now in the planning stage, we're going to be going out soon looking for partners. There's a lot right now just in that Grady TOD work that could be done, that we could use this assistant, this person's assistance in. Downtown is an ongoing thing to keep your downtown alive and revitalized and, and moving along with the, the, the times that we want to see for our downtown, which is the heartbeat of the community. This person will still have a heavy focus on our downtown. I know up in the Sunset area, the Planning Department, I'm sure, has lots of different initiatives and redevelopment ideas that really it comes down to staff sometimes to be able to initiate new, new items. So we see a lot of activity there. So does that answer your question?
Councilmember O'Halloran.
So when do you anticipate the council will be able to get our hands on the actual complaint? When will we see the fruits of that labor?
I'm going to look to Angie.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Halloran. Yes, we are in the middle of receiving agency comments from Department of Commerce, from PSRC. We're going through those right now. We're actually going to be bringing an item to the P and D Committee to, to speak about those comments. But the physical comp plan in your hands, we're hoping to get to you by, because it has to be adopted no later than the But the physical comp plan in your hands, we're hoping to get to you by, because it, it has to be adopted no later than the thirty, thirty-first.
Any other questions from council for Jenna? If not, we're going to let her go.
I have one question, Councilmember Prince, and I promise it'll be my last one.
If it's your last one, then I'll let you go ahead.
I appreciate that, thank you. Have we been able to fill Hana Ba Miller, or Hana Ba Miller's position?
So we have two different positions that I believe are associated with your question. Yes, on one, the other one, we went out and we didn't find somebody, but we're going out again. So the answer should be yes by the end of the year, I would think.
Beginning of next year.
First quarter.
Yeah, just to clarify, we had three open positions, including Hannah's position this year. We filled two of those. We've gone out multiple times and we're only able to fill two. So we have one remaining position. And just so we're not constantly going out for recruitment all year long, we're going to wait until the first quarter of next year.
Thank you so much for answering those questions.
Thank you, Jenna.
Welcome.
All right, next up, we have Kristi Rowan, who's already making her way up for executive services. Kristi, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you very much, Council President Prince, council members. I'm so delighted to be here representing the executive services department. As you'll see, we have some asks to make here. And on that note, I want to first thank my colleagues. Our administrator team really scoured our budgets and found pots of money that were underutilized, positions that were unfilled for many years, put everything in the hat so that all of us had an opportunity to potentially get some things on our wish list. We also compromised, not everybody got everything. And I think it was a very collaborative effort that resulted in what we really needed, which was the right sizing. For internal services, the right sizing is exactly what we need. So you'll see here, three positions being proposed, two in the next year and two in, or one in two thousand twenty-six. Also, an increase to our capital budget, which I'll review in just one moment. I do want to point out that our net change from twenty-five to twenty-six does not appear to go up. That's because one of our limited term positions expires in two thousand twenty-five. So the three increase will look like two on this slide. I do encourage you to read all about our accomplishments, which are summarized and briefly listed and not in whole in the budget document. We're working on ways to let you know about our accomplishments in a more effective way and more frequently than during our budget presentations. So executive services, we operationalize your business plan, that's our job. It includes the mayor's office, the CIO, government affairs, public defense, and all the department administrators, of course, work with the mayor's office. We have kind of a department within a department here where I support the mayor's office, CIO, and all of the above. And I also oversee as administrator the internal services that we pulled together in two thousand twenty-one, who have very like missions and purposes and are working amazingly well together to deliver in a coordinated effort on their many goals, which I will talk about. So that's us, kind of a little sub of a sub here. And our, our mission statement is to leverage our strengths. We're, we have very different disciplines in all of the divisions, but we're looking at transparency, resiliency, trust in government, communication, all the things, we have a common chord through all of our divisions. And so leveraging each other's strengths to get to those is really vital, and I think we do a very good job of that. The two budget proposals only impact two of our small groups. I wanted to give you just a little bit of a history so you can understand our first request, which is for an admin assistant. When we started in two thousand twenty-one, we had the mayor's office, of course, an executive department, with an executive assistant and an administrative secretary supporting that position. With the, a small but mighty department, when we added my position to support the mayor's office and all of these departments, we added, we slid over that admin secretary and promoted that position to an admin assistant to support me as the administrator. We did not add any other administrative support. So now a department of over forty had one admin assistant supporting this whole team. So you were gracious enough to approve in addition of an admin secretary to support the IT department in two thousand twenty-two. That was very helpful, taking nearly half of the workload off. But there's still quite a few left. We did also add a limited term, that's the one I referred to earlier, limited term position, that's Patty down in the lobby, who is there for the duration of our customer service center project as the kind of the central greeter, receptionist, also continuously gathering data for us about why people are coming to the city and what we can do to support them better. That person now, Patty, reports to our organizational development manager, who also is overseeing our rent and response application improvement process, project, excuse me. We also, of course, in the last year or so, added from the EHHS reorg, the community outreach position, and that exponentially increased the work of the communications and engagement group. And then, of course, the government affairs manager was added to the, the mayor's office last year in the biennial budget. So what this looks like now is one person has quite a lot on their plate, and we are seeking to add just one position to help support that person. Currently, on the administrative assistants plate, say Equity Commission Task Force, supporting the directors of five divisions, all the employees. Also, because I'm the boss, I also like to make sure to stretch. So she's currently set up a retreat for all of the admin assistants to create professional development offered opportunities specifically for the admins of the city. And that is something I think will have great reward and is also something that she could do more of if she had a little bit of help. This admin secretary position would mostly support communications and engagement, which is where the bulk of the work is, scheduling, coordinating, purchasing. But also, emergency management has a great deal of scheduling and coordination and, of course, organizational development as well. Jason is pretty self-sufficient, they're primarily administrative in nature, but there's, there will be a little bit of help there as well. So this position would report to the admin assistant, who knows the work and can balance it out across the divisions that need it. The second, the next two positions are in IT. And I'll go each, through each one of those separately. The first one is a data analyst and report writer. So what you're seeing here is a few examples of some of the dashboards that have been developed over the last couple of years. This started off with, through OD, working with IT. Those are two divisions in our department. Updating the metrics that you're seeing in your budget books with all the departments. So working with each of them to take a hard look at what you're actually measuring. Does it make sense? Is it meaningful? And then moving from this once every other year report that you get to see to a more dynamic way of viewing the data and make, maybe making it more useful and transparent to the community. So some of these that you're seeing, these are just some examples, are outward facing. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, CED has also played a part here with a couple of these you've seen before. Our demographics, for example, that's on our website. The rent and response data, if you're curious about what's being reported and how it's being handled, you can see it on our website. So that's as transparent as we can get. The others are internal. They're for us to know where to put our resources. Where do we need to spend more time? Who needs some help? Just any kind of management data that is useful, we can do now. And you'll see one on the bottom right that the police department developed with this platform to provide some of, some transparency into their data as well. So this was, this project was very successful as a pilot. And now we need to put our money where our mouth is and really puts, put a person behind it. Give it some more legs so that they can work fully. This was a project for multiple people. If we have one person dedicated to it, there's a lot more we can do here. And it won't be limited just to dashboards, but other ways of showcasing data. The other area that will be impacted here is we need policies, we need governance, we have data categorization to do. It's a great illustration of how our five divisions work well together. Everything from public records, email retention, the data you're seeing here is all tied together. There's a common chord of data and information that all of our groups work with. It's showcased here, communications is also here. And this, this little group eventually, who will be in our GIS and data team, they'll be very impactful throughout the city. The next position, we actually used our own tools to identify what would be, like I said earlier, we all had a wish list of what, what would we ask for if we could? And we had to prioritize. Well, we used our own data to decide that it would be most effective to add a la, a series number three to this position series, a more advanced customer service focused staff member at our help desk. They can take on some of the work right now. If you look, and these are just snapshots from the dashboards that we used, there's almost seven thousand work orders a year for this group. That's three people plus two interns. And a hundred of the requests that, or over a hundred requests that come through each month are performed by the apps team, who are responsible for implementing projects and developing projects and working on bigger picture items. So those, if we were able to provide a more advanced level of our customer service help desk, we can actually take some of that work off of the apps team, for example, allow them to do more impactful work at their level and give the service desk some promotional opportunities, too. We have, we're working on this in every division in ESD where we have a series promotion opportunities in each position. It is really frustrating to have nowhere to go. And sometimes you have to go out to go up, and that's just the way it is. But where we can, we're investing and developing and providing a lot of training. We want to continue to provide promotional opportunities. So that is the end of our positions. On the capital funding, cybersecurity is going to be a regular request at every budget cycle. As hard as we are working to keep them out, bad actors are working even harder to get in. This will not change, this will not go away. We have a wonderful team who's working on this. We can sleep at night and, but there's never time to rest. This is something that will always be evolving. So these are, these dollars will continue to allow us to buy programming, new devices. We've already rotated out of some obsolete devices that will, just to show we do need to keep evolving. And we do keep evolving. The disaster recovery and business continuity, that is when something bad happens and all of our systems go down, we have the ability to flip a switch and turn it back on. Currently, we have that located in one of our fire stations. We also have that, a backup located in City Hall. The next step, which is what this will fund, is to get something located on the east side, the east side of the mountains. So if we have something serious that we can't flip two switches here, we'll have something very far away from us that we can continue operating and providing services, communicating and delivering. The infrastructure replacement is another ongoing maintenance. We have a lot of systems that require just replacing switches and, and cables and, and updating, modernizing equipment so that we can count on it and prevent failure. And last, artificial intelligence, this will be a pilot project. We know this is, this is here. We also know that we must be very thoughtful and careful about how we implement it. We do not want to erode the trust in our information. We don't want to erode confidence in what we provide. So we'll be working to provide policy standards and tools that we can use safely in-house and deliver customer service. Your chatbots, your customer service delivery, RFPs, all sorts of things are possible, but we have to do it very thoughtfully or we will create more problems than what we're trying to solve. I wanted to just make a note that we do actively seek grants. So while these are not as big a dollars as your Public Works grants, these are real dollars that we seek and secure to continue our cybersecurity updates and testing. We've done a tabletop exercise, we've done all sorts of things to make sure we are in a really good position. These are all through FEMA. But we'll continue seeking these dollars so that we don't have to ask you for them as they become available. Last but not least, these are the collective goals of our, all of our five divisions of the internal services group. We all have something, a part of these, and we'll continue to do that and provide the services for, so that we can deliver the priorities of the mayor. Just to summarize, these are the last three positions, IT capital budget. And I did do the math because I am former finance and it's forty cents a month to add these, these things, if you were curious. With that, any questions? I'm happy to answer at this time.
Any questions from council? Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
With regard with the, the IT analyst and report writer, how many BI tools do we currently have? I'm sorry, business intelligence for those folks who don't know what that means?
We have the Power BI dashboard tool, which is the main one we're using. But as far as business intelligence, I'm going to have to get you a list later because it depends on how it's classified.
Oh, if I may? I guess I'm curious, how many different tools this individual is expected to, to know how to operate?
Oh, they'll be working within our databases. We have quite a few of those, and I'm going to have to give you a follow-up on that specifically. We have over two hundred and ninety applications throughout the city. So that, each one of those could be one or more database focused.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
Hi, Kristi. Thank you for your presentation. I totally love it. I loved it, how dynamic it is, and, and I love the moving parts to, to, and especially to go back to the past, how this department has transformed and the needs. And your summary were very, very, very clear, and I do appreciate that, that you highlight the additions and the, and especially the operation budget summary, because it was very confusing when I read it on the, on the budget. So I appreciate that. So just to recapitulate with you and clarify, I'm going to ask two questions in one if I'm allowed to do that. So under executive services department, currently, we have one executive assistant and one administrative assistant, who used to support the executive assistant until their organization of the department. And they, and during that time, after the pandemic, the support in absence of the executive assistant was the chief of staff of the legislative branch, which in absence of, of the executive assistant, even though I'm not complaining, she's more than happy to have fulfilled that duty as a part of a team, but it was not part of her job description. I am assuming that now having three people, one executive assistant, one administrative assistant, and now one administrative secretary, and since the proposed position, job description, say that we provide depth of support within executive support services, this person will be covering the position of the executive assistant perhaps?
Yes, this will provide depth. So right now, when she's on vacation, we wait for her to come back, and there's no one else to help her. There also, when we had a retirement and a vacancy, she stepped up and helped during that time with no one to backfill for her. So there are, there's definitely going to, it's going to add depth. So we'll be able to support better the mayor's office when we need to. Certainly, when legislative needs a hand, we'll be able to step in there as well.
Which is what my question is in, too. When you say that the job description is provide depth of support within the legislative, the legislative branch, what does that mean? How does that look?
If help is asked, we will help. It depends on what, what the help is needed. So it's already a fairly collaborative group. I will use names, Hannah and Judith, and they work very closely together already. So there would be a request for help, we can, we can provide what we need. So there, for example, if someone is, needs to take a vacation, we can cover. So there, for example, if someone is, needs to take a vacation, we can cover for the council meetings, for example. Is that, does that answer your question, or is there something that I'm missing?
I probably will have to see it. It's just that, um, when the executive assistant has been absent, uh, the, the, oh, the m- more um logistical support has been relying in the chief of staff of the young lady branch. What in the past, the administrative assistant was the one who was supposed to be supporting heavily the executive assistant. So my question, if, if now there are going to be three people on the executive, I am assuming that they are going to rely on each other first.
Yes, yes, correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Yes, Councilwoman Prince.
Go ahead, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. Also, second, uh, Council member Perez's comments, great presentation. I also liked your moving pieces and parts. And I wanted to just also give accolades um before I ask my question really quickly. I wanted to say I really appreciate you highlighting the um training, how many hours you coordinated with your staff, um, and how the workforce had participated in that and attention to, and the attendance to multiple trainings. I appreciate that because I think professional development is just one of those things that we don't want to um underserve, right? We are, our employees are also our customers in a way, right?
Yes.
And so I just wanted to say kudos. Thank you for doing that. Um, I also really appreciate, and this is where my question comes in, is on the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six goals on three eighteen, I love, love, love so much that the goal is to boost channel twenty-one viewership by collaborating with partners citywide, enhancing uh perception of city efforts through effective communication and outreach, and expanding community engagement by creating more opportunities to listen, learn. Could you explain to me more on how we're going to do that? And how these, and I, I'm assuming some of these new administrative positions might be supporting that effort. I know the administrative position that Councilmember Perez was referring to is also going to be helping with communication. So how will that role help with communication? How are we going to really like boost that viewership? Because I, just gonna say it again, I love that we want to further support and invest in those infrastructures while other cities are trying to cut them.
Yes. Uh, there's so many channels that we can tap into more, and we are already doing that um with our, our fully staffed uh communications team. The engagement side um will feed into the channel twenty-one. I'm, I'm going to use terrible terminology, production schedule, I think you would call it. By engaging with uh different members of the community, because we're trying to grow the engagement, the civic engagement side of communications and engagement, we're going to be working on a civic academy, a welcome to Renton um ex- uh engagement effort, more involvement with the mayor's inclusion task force, um, and expanded uh ex- uh visibility of our equity commission. All of those things are great to showcase on channel twenty-one. We're also working right now, I believe, on Mayor in the Minute, providing some content just about what's happening in the city. Um, I'm not sure of the frequency of that. I hope I haven't spoiled uh something. Um, but uh providing new and fresh and engaging content is really the direction to go and for uh short form versus long form, the kind of the things that catch your eye, the things that people are going to want to have it turned on to, but also using our other channels, the, the social, social media platforms, um, and really video is really where it comes, comes into. So the administrative uh piece of that is, I mean, that's just a whole lot of scheduling. That is every single meeting, every single video, every single um interview is scheduling, not just one person, but a whole team of people to get together and aligning planets can make you pull your hair out. So that will definitely um be a big part of that position.
Well, I appreciate that. I also just want to shout out the social media team. In the last few years, I've just seen so much come out. I know it's a lot of work behind the scenes, so thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank them. Thank you.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. First off, I got a pile on the love fest for the graphics. That was definitely the part that stood out to me, so kudos for that. Um, the, the question I had was regarding the equity commission. I suppose I could have asked this question of any of our administrators. We know they provided feedback on this budget. This is the area I'm asking the question because uh my question here is, was there additional work that they identified in, in terms of uh staff capacity? I know this admin secretary position would go to support that. Um, what, was, was there any of the feedback they had as far as direct support or ideas, ideas that they may have had that should have been supported? And how did that feedback uh get taken?
What we went to them for primarily was the process. So how we were engaging with the community, what the stages were of decision-making, the resources that are involved. And so we did get some really good feedback about how we should approach that in terms of where we should be advertising the survey, the languages, but also making it accessible and um some of the public engagement side of things, going to the farmer's market, doing more face-to-face kind of things. As far as direct budget, every presentation we have with staff is, there is a comment from the commissioners about, are you asking for more money specifically, specifically around human services, um, recruitment efforts around um any kind of hiring in the city. Everything related to uh community engagement more and more is, so they ask, do we have enough? And this is how we're communicating what we need. But they, they are engaged in, in knowing that we have a big mission.
Anyone that hasn't asked a question, have a question? Anyone who has asked a question, have a question? Yes, Councilman Brough Howard.
So on your slide strategic goals, I see an um, an asterisk footnote that says summary of twenty-five, twenty-six goals generated by A I, edited by Kay Rowland.
I did that just to drive our network infrastructure security person crazy. Um, that's where we're headed. And so I, I literally fed our goals that are in the budget into Chat G P T and it spit out these um strategic goals. I mean, it wa- and it was twenty seconds of work. So I did that very specifically on purpose. Sorry, Brett. I think he's listening.
Any other questions for um?
I love the looks you give me, Council President Prince.
Oh, Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I just want to ask for clarity in terms of the equity commission. So is it now House under executive services? Okay.
Senator Rivera.
Thank you, Council President Prince. Um, just a question in regards, I know other cities are doing it. And when it comes to community engagement and civic engagement in particular, which stuck out to me and I appreciate thoroughly, um, have we thought about allowing our committee and commission meetings to be recorded and also put for that civic engagement piece on YouTube and channel twenty-one? I know other cities are moving in that direction if they're not doing so already.
Certainly. So part of the curriculum could be attendance, actually, at committee and commission meetings. As far as recording them, that would be up to the individual uh committees and commissions potentially, or some oversight from you or um. But we do want the civic academy to have experience in that, attending or ideally attending in some kind of committee meeting or, or council meeting and being part of it.
Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Perez.
All right, Mr. President. Um, let's talk a little bit about communications. Uh, I read very carefully the, the budget and communications uh because I, the goals are very um ambitious. And, and, and I was curious about specifically channel twenty-one. Channel twenty-one has been underutilized for many, many decades in, in the city for lack of budget. Um, one of the goals is to make it better, look better, but I didn't see the numbers behind that. So how we're going, and what are, what is your plan? Probably forecasting for future budgets or coming midterm to request uh more funding to be able to make this goal happen?
We actually have, so channel twenty-one comes with its own budget. It's funded through the Comcast franchise fees and PEG funds. So we have funding there. Uh, it's just making and creating the content to put on channel twenty-one. There, there is no additional budget ask or need to do that at this point, uh depending on how much we wanted to do. But right now, we could, could potentially be filling the, the airwaves with what we have, are producing now. There's no additional ask, and actually we can further tap into our budget of uh the PEG funds.
We have one question, following question. Since this budget has always been there, and I know this is not you because you're very new in this position, why we have never uh take advantage of that budget to, to make that channel uh, I don't want to say the, 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 I don't want to say better, but uh, you know, more effective for the service of the public that we serve?
I really can't speak to the, what the intent was of using channel twenty-one in the past. We just know that there's a kind of an untapped potential there that we're gonna, we're going to exploit and build on.
Thank you, Christie. I pretty much appreciate this.
You bet.
Thank you, Christie. Oh, my goodness. Uh, city attorney. Maloney, come on up, you're the next contestant on the presses, right?
Hey, I missed you at the foots meeting of the month this week.
You really did.
Arrows, thank you. So I am Shane Maloney. I am here to present the budget proposal for the city attorney department on pages, starting on pages three twenty-two. I believe it goes through page three twenty-five. Um, fairly short in terms of number of pages in your budget book. And before I jump into what our proposals are, because that's really what I want to focus on today, is what our proposals are for change. I just want to talk about what our budget objectives were that went into um those asks. And it's really just maintaining quality level of service. We're not adding new programs or new services as much as keeping up with the workload that we have now. Um, and uh, some of that has been increased. I'm going to start on the prosecution division here. Um, we've noticed some burnout, particularly we had burnout um in D V related cases. We had D V specialists um and prosecutors that just kind of had a trend of not lasting very long. And we've made some changes um organizationally to address that. Um, so that now all of our prosecutors are, are handling D V cases. So it's not all, that the pressure of those cases aren't put all on one person, but it has some other impacts that we'll talk a little bit, bit about here. We've also had a massive increase in, in video evidence from body cameras. Um, you, you now have multiple different angles of, of every incident that police officers respond to. And that takes up just a lot of um resources, both in personnel and storage and um, and then also dealing with that throughout the case from the beginning, from transferring it over to the public defenders through using it in trial. So it, it definitely has an impact. We're continuing to um maintain and hopefully expand our community court uh participation. And we're improving our, our transparency and our case management. Uh, we're in the middle of rolling out our key, our new case management system, maybe not rolling out, maybe that's a little premature. We're starting to implement it, hoping to roll it out by the, the end of the year or the beginning of the ne- of next year. Um, that will allow for, when I say transparency, things like it provides a database, one of those factors that you can use for um looking at how many of certain types of cases you have and things like that, where you can have dashboards that we can work with I T on on those issues. So that's the, the prosecution side at a high level, what's influencing what our requests are, and I'll get to those on the following slides. On the civil side, um, again, it's just maintaining our, our level of service to our client departments. Uh, our client departments are expanding in the services that they provide. The, the legal issues are, are increasing in complexity. And uh, we just want to be able to keep up with them and be able to be responsive and, and not slow them down, frankly, to be able to keep up with that, um, that level of demand. So this is the financial picture of what our budget request is, tried to separate out the cost of each position, which I'll talk about on the, on the following pages, but it, this is in your budget book. The, the big picture of the numbers, uh, we'd be going from fifteen F T Es to seventeen F T Es, and I'll get into what those are on the following slides. And this is where I really have some envy for the, the graphics that Christie presented. Um, so the, the yellow positions here are reclassification positions. The green positions are new positions. The blue positions are positions that aren't changing. Um, I'm going to talk about each one of these on, on the following slide, each one of the reclassifications and the new positions on the following slides. Um, so this is the prosecution requests. Uh, I talked a little bit about the D V assignments. Uh, initially, our, our paralegal position in the prosecution side was created primarily for the D V cases. So the, the, the paralegal would handle um all of the, the D V cases, but also the trial preparation and witness corporate coordination and D V advocate coordination. Um, and they were kind of separate from, they would just jump into the cases uh later on. What we're looking at doing is taking our legal assistants who have always started with a case from, from the start to almost finish and have them be able to go from start to finish, which creates a little bit of efficiency, if that makes sense. It also provides cross-coverage. If you have a, if you have a paralegal out there, you're only paralegal, and your legal assistants are in a different classification, performing a different type of work, it makes it difficult to handle as to um assigning them temporarily to do somebody else's job essentially. So this will allow us some simplicity and know that we can assign the work to anyone and, and, and cross over. Um, I think there's more to it than that, but uh they'll all take on a higher level of complexity of work and, and, and be able to work with their prosecutors again from the, from the start to finish of a case. Um, and in doing so, I'd say that our biggest, where we've handled our workload so far is our prosecutors have, have worked, some of our prosecutors have worked fifty, sixty, seventy hours sometimes. Um, it, and that leads to the burnout that we talked about, right? Um, and so we looked at, do we add another prosecutor so that we can handle some of it that way? And we decided the most efficient way was to start with, or to add a legal assistant with some of the more administrative tasks that they can take off of those prosecutors. So for example, our prosecutors have over the years started drafting their own complaints at the start of a case. Um, whereas it used to be a legal assistant, but the legal assistants got too filled up with work that they could no longer do that. So our prosecutors took on that work. We're looking at putting that work back to a legal assistant. Um, so that um, to a legal assistant and/or the, their paralegal, we haven't figured out the details. But basically, it's, it's less expensive and more efficient to have the lower level positions than to add another prosecutor. So that's where we're starting here because there's enough of that type of work that we can, we can put into those positions. It also provides us some cross-coverage um at various different levels. Moving on to the civil division statistics, um, kind of the, the background of why we're asking for the first time since the city attorney's office came into the city, we're requesting to add a um, a new attorney. Um, and I just kind of want to show you, the contracts are the ones that really speak here. Not quite doubled, but going from the high four hundreds to uh the mid to high eight hundreds in number of contracts that we process. And I'd say a lot of these are, are more complex uh contracts, particularly the I T contracts. I think we've added two hundred and some I T contracts as we've focused more on cleaning those up. And those tend to be negotiated and complex in terms of liabilities that we're looking to avoid. Um, and then all of the other work that comes along that we really don't have numbers for because we don't have a, we don't have a ticket order system. We respond to things by a phone call or by a meeting or by an email. So we don't have a good system to be able to tell you all the different, different places that we provide advice. But the more time we're spending on one area, the less we have to spend on that. So we're just looking to add capacity so that we can keep up with the work. Um, so we're asking for a new assistant city attorney. Um, the idea being is that'll provide us some additional uh resources for providing legal advice, reviewing contracts, doing research, handling some of the things that when our other attorneys are, are busy doing the day-to-day processing things, they can dive in and, and help us research new issues when the city has ideas to do new things that it hasn't done before and being able to um have someone that can help us do that. And then it also allows that position room to grow. This is the entry level, so to speak, attorney position. In adding that position, we're looking to reclassify the senior paralegal position down to a legal assistant position. And without context, that might sound like, well, who are we downgrading? The reason we're able to do that is because our current senior paralegal is an attorney, and we would be promoting that person into the attorney position. Um, and we talked about whether or not to leave it as a senior paralegal position. There's multiple reasons why we decided to. It's actually not that easy of a decision. But beyond the fact that it saves money, it also makes it easier to recruit for the position. A lot of our additional uh needs are related to contract processing, contract or in process improvement. A lot of our additional needs are related to contract processing and process improvement. If we can make our processes more efficient, then we can provide better service. And the senior paralegal position is a near attorney position, which explains why we have an attorney in it, someone with many years of experience in litigation and/or legislation and things like that. We don't necessarily need all of that experience based upon our current staffing. We have an excellent legal analyst who is going to take over supervising both this legal assistant position and the new legal assistant position in the prosecution side. And we think that we can cover it with that, which also provides us additional cross-coverage and ability to help her. And she's basically been project managing our implementation of new case management systems and things like that. So that's where we're going with that. Last substantive slide, I always like to touch on emerging challenges slash opportunities, things that might affect the budget is primarily what I'm talking about. Because as we talk, look into the future, it's, okay, this is what we think we need right now, but what might change? As I say that, I don't think that we'll need more resources on the prosecution case management software, the first bullet I have here. But what we're asking for helps us implement that. Again, most of our staff is just, particularly on the prosecution side, they're processing all day long every case that comes in. And that's what they're focused on is, what's the case that's before the judge that day? What's the case that we need to resolve that day? And they don't have time to step back and help with process improvement-type things. We're hopeful that the legal assistant position would be able to step back and do a little bit more of that. Public defense standards, I don't know if any of you have heard about the proposed public defense standards and public defense standards that have actually been adopted at the Bar Association level and recommended to the Supreme Court to adopt as mandatory. The impacts of that could be very large, both budget-wise and operational-wise. Over the long term, I can't remember what the exact phase in, but the proposal is to go from public defense attorneys being able to take a maximum of 400 cases down to roughly 100, if you look at it the way that they weight them. So about a four times increase in the number of public defense attorneys. There's a lot of concern that there's not enough public defense attorneys out there that are licensed to practice law. So there's impacts on, okay, even if you have the money to add four times the number of attorneys, can you find them? And that's, and there's, that's just at the misdemeanor level. The felony level is similar in reducing the number of cases that they can handle, maybe even more so. So there's concerns that counties are going to decline cases and potentially send them down to us. We're going to have to make decisions as to whether we have enough resources to prosecute them. I don't want to scare you too much, but I want to just point out that there is this issue that is out there. It's currently under consideration by the Supreme Court of Washington. And I think the city, the AWC, and others are providing some comments on that. But we don't have a lot of control over what the Supreme Court ultimately does on it. So we're going to be reactive. We're going to, we're going to come back to you guys as needed. And not under my budget, but it certainly would have costs on the public defense side as well, as we do pay for the public defender services. So just an FYI. Modernizing processes for civil case management, I just wanted to point out in past budgets, I think this last budget, the one that we're in now, we had a case management system we were hoping to acquire. We were hoping to look into acquiring a case management system for the civil side. We've kind of put that on hold, both because we used all of our money on the prosecution side, but also the city's in the process of changing its technology between SharePoint, between the ERP system that Finance is going to talk about. And then we also have existing systems for things like contract management. We're going to see what we, what tools we have before we go out and get a new tool. But one way or another, we're going to be looking at, you know, improving our processes. And these additional resources will hopefully help us to be able to do that on the civil side as well. And then last is just kind of an ongoing bullet. What we do is we support what the city's needs are, legal needs are. So whatever those may be, whether it be through litigation, whether it be through legislative changes from you or from the state or from cases or from new programs, we're going to be here to help and manage through those things. With that, any questions?
Any questions on counsel?
You scared us all, Shane. That's.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, Carrie, you want to bring us home?
I'm going to be covering three departments, Finance, Human Resources, and the Municipal Court. And I'll pause after each one so that we can answer questions within each department. I wanted to start with, we're starting with Finance. I have two of my team members here, Nate Malone and Kristen Travellis. Our budget lead resigned at the beginning of August, right when it was probably at the critical point of pulling this budget together. And without these two by my side, I don't think we would have been able to pull it together. The countless hours they put in was tremendous. So I just wanted to recognize them both this evening before I got started. So a high-level overview of our budget. Like our other internal service departments, we have a lot of laws and regulations and compliance items that are changing and ever-changing and getting more complex as the world gets more complex. And so we're looking to add two positions, one in '25 and one in '26, and also some professional services. So to go over some of the budget highlights that we're asking, we're first asking to add $150,000 for Investment Advisor. Right now, we have one person that is handling this along with their multiple other duties. And we really saw this was a nice carve-out of duties that we could outsource. And it would make sense just to have someone else who is more professional in this area to kind of keep their eye on the ever-changing climate with investments. We're offsetting this cost with an increase in investment revenues. And so with the extra work around this, we think that we'll be able to pay for this extra service. We also are looking to add two positions, one Admin Secretary in 2025 and an Entry Level Finance Analyst in 2026. Like the other departments that you heard from this evening, you know, as we're looking at our workload, we were really seeing a lot of our senior-level staff doing a lot of the routine admin work on a day-to-day basis. And we really wanted to carve some of that out and get the senior-level staff working on more of those complex accounting issues instead of doing some of the routine reconciliations, journal entries, memos that we have to send out and so forth. So some of the changes that we've seen just in the last couple of years to highlight is the opioid dollars that we've received. There's a lot of compliance around those. We added the Transportation Benefit District last year. There's a lot of accounting and rules around that, as well as the Housing and Human Services Sales Tax that we added a few years ago. So those are just some examples of some of the complexities that have been added to our workload, where we're needing a little bit more support. And as Shane said, I think he put it really well, just to kind of keep the wheels moving forward. With Finance, we need to make sure we're paying people on time, we're paying our vendors. And so there really isn't a lot of downtime. And so this will help support the teams that we have right now. The Entry Level Finance Analyst, we were also hoping to really have some just out of college so that we could really help grow and be able to teach somebody in the government world. A lot of finance individuals and professionals aren't looking to go into government accounting. And it's not something that they honestly think about. I talked to a lot of my boys' friends that are going into accounting. And I'm like, hey, look into working for a city. And they hadn't even thought about it. And so we saw this as an opportunity to have a position where we could start to grow from within. And it would, you know, provide some promotional opportunities as well as we move forward. This is just a high-level overview of our budget. It's mostly salaries and benefits, just because of the nature of the work that we do. The biggest, other biggest pie of our budget is other services and supplies. That's mainly made up of our annual audit from the State Auditor's Office, as well as all of the city's credit card fees, bank merchant fees, banking fees. And so that's all for citywide, that's within our budget there. And so some of the goals for our Finance Department in the next biennium, along with the ongoing implementation of our new accounting system, our ERP system, we also need to complement that transition with updating a lot of our financial policies and our workflow automation. Our current system, I've mentioned before, is over 20 years old. And so our current process is really around, working around the limitations of our current system versus really bringing in some new functionality. And so some examples of things that we're going to be looking to fold into this next biennium is to look at some of our financial reserve policies, really look at our banking contract and our banking needs, and how does that complement with our new program? And also just to start working on some workflow and automation of our documents. We have a lot of paper in Finance, and how do we get that more to digitize items and be able to save some time in that area? So I will pause there. That's the end of Finance. If anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Carrie on Finance?
President.
Yes, Councilmember Albers.
Yes, Carrie. The, I guess it's kind of an A-B question. The, glad to see the Investment Advisor. I think that's a good, a good move, I guess. You know, when you, well, not I guess, but when you say offset by increases in investment earnings, you're talking about anticipated investment earnings, because you have somebody who's, that's what they do. If that's anticipated, okay. Part B is, does this in any way change the risk tolerance with which the city looks at investments because you have this professional? And we've talked about that, like, hey, take all the money, put it in Nvidia, hey, we'll be sitting pretty, right? But we can't do that. Does this, does this change that at all to some degree even? You know, or is it as conservative as, you know, talk to me about that.
Well, so we have an investment policy that we have to follow, and it's really surrendered around not being risky with our investments. I think where we'll be able to do better is investing in bonds right now. Just because we don't have time, we'll hear about a great rate. Because we don't have time to move quickly enough, the next day when we're ready to move, it's already changed, because we have so much changing right now. And so the bond investments, I think we could really do better, have someone have their eye on it and be ahead, knowing maybe some rates are changing, maybe this looks good right now because they've been watching the ups and downs of the market. That's where we've really been missing. And so I think that we'll be able to have a nice laddering of investments better than we do right now with this Investment Advisor.
Any other questions? Councilmember Perez.
Thank you. Hi, Carrie. Thank you for your presentation. And thank you for all the work that you and your staff did to put together this budget. I always have questions around the operating budget summary, because then when I review the list of rent and results decision packages, I go, you know, the proposal from year by year and how much has increased. So specifically in the, in your department, from 2022 to 2026 are 2 million an increase. Is this a projection based on increase of salaries?
Or our budget overall changing?
If you go page 344, and you have your operating summary, budget summary, the increase from '22 to 2026 is 2 million. And then down, you have the list of rental results, and then you have the numbers where they go. So I'm wondering if the increase is just, tell me where, the 2 million?
Some of it is from positions. So we added a limited-term position in between '22 and '23 to bring on our accounting system, to be able to map those processes and get the accounting system off the ground. Some of it is professional services, because our audit costs are higher now with our recent finding from last year. And then, yes, some of it is future positions that we're asking for this time.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you. My question's regarding the Financial Analyst position, which you said was aimed at sort of kind of a recruitment sort of goal, as far as getting someone in here who might be a recent college graduate. My question, I guess, would be is, is there any value in looking at not quite get college graduates? Do we offer internships? There's a route we've looked at as well, to all, this is another great tool to grow workforce.
Would love an internship program. We actually participated in one back in 2017, I believe, through WFOA. It's Washington Finance Officers Association. We've asked to participate again, but we have not been selected since we did participate just a few years ago. From that, actually, the intern we had, he eventually, when we had an opening, applied. And he's still with us here today. He's one of our senior finance analysts, one of our tenured one. And so it was a wonderful experience. And I would, we keep trying every year, asking to be part of it. They actually fund part of the internship program, which makes it for a finance person, you know, a good thing to do. But yes, it would be wonderful to bring in interns to really help grow. It's a, it's a hard area to fill right now. It's not something people are thinking about working at cities.
Any other questions on Finance? If not, Carrie, go ahead.
Okay, then we're moving into HR. Just a high-level summary of their budget. This includes, just one to keep in mind for counsel, their budget includes all of our self-insurance. And that's why the budget looks so high when you look at some of these figures, because it's human resources and risk management. So this includes our healthcare benefits. It includes all of our property insurance, liability, auto, cybersecurity, workers' comp, all of that. At this time, we're not adding any positions, just because we had the administrator position open right now. We really wanted to hold on adding anything or looking to see if this position or this department is right-sided, until we did get the administrator position filled. The decrease in position is a limited-term position that expires in, that expired in 2024 for a safety coordinator that we had added during COVID, to really help with some of that overflow of benefits during COVID time. Some of the highlights for their changes, HR is asking for $150,000 for professional services. This is to do two things. This is to help with salary market study analysis. We, this is something that they do every year. It takes a lot of time. And we found that if we could devote some dollars to market study annually to be able to look at them ongoing, instead of as things come up, we can stay competitive in our market, competitive with market wages. The other part of the professional services is adding for legal services. Again, just like Finance, there's a lot of laws and regulations that are changing constantly. And so this will help take off some of that workload off of HR to be able to really have an expert to guide them. There's been a lot of changes in just benefits alone in the last several years. And so really leaning on some of those professionals to help guide. The other item that you'll see in HRRM is because we are self-insured, we have a large transfer of almost 800,000 from risk management to capital to help fund the Spring Brick Trail where it was damaged a few years ago. And so I wanted to call that out, because it's, you wouldn't expect to see that large of a transfer. So that's to help fund that repair. Human resources, a large amount of the pie on the left, the biggest amount, that 60%, is really our healthcare benefits. And so I wanted to take that out of the grid that's on the rights, to be able to compare, you know, more of their other figures, taking out that lion's share of the dollars that you have there. So a lot of their budget as well, just like Finance, is salaries-related. And the insurance side is the premiums that are on our self-insurance plan. I talked about a couple of weeks ago how we've really seen increases in costs and insurance premiums. I think all of, all of us have seen that, just even with our home insurance and auto insurance. The city is not alone with that. And so that large increase that you're seeing in insurance was that some of the insurance premium increases in our prior biennium wasn't in there. And so we're adjusting to what we're having to pay now, and then also looking forward, knowing that these costs are continuing to go up. So some of the goals for Finance in the upcoming biennium, or I'm sorry, HR, for that coming biennium, and just like Finance, working on some of their process and policies and helping us in Finance, as well as IT, implement the new ERP system. They have a large role in that as well with the employee database that's in there. And so they also are looking at some of their process, working with our payroll department to get documents digitized, to make that easier for onboarding and just more efficient. And then also looking at market studies of non-represented positions. And the next couple of years, it's been one of the areas that we haven't looked at. And so that's going to be one of their focuses. So I'm going to pause at HR.
Any questions for Carrie on HR? Yes, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Carrie. Me and my questions, 351. I always have a hard time with the other services and changes. So in this case, the change for other services and changes for 2024 to the proposed budget is 67%. Is this increase, is this salary study and property damage part of this?
It's the salary study, as well as the professional service for legal support, the $150,000 per year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Albers.
I have a two-part question. Did I hear you say that the administrator role has been filled?
It has not been filled. It has not been filled yet. We're actively recruiting for it.
Okay, all right. I thought I, I thought I heard you say it was filled. And then also the DEI analyst, what's the status on that?
Before Ellen retired, she went out to recruit and was not successful in finding an individual to fill that position. Right now, the team in HR has been all working to kind of fill that role. We have our risk manager that's been working with the Title VI component side of things. We have one of the senior analysts that's participating in local community groups around governing for racial equity and inclusion, also part of a regional coalition around that, the East Side cities. And so even though we don't have that position filled, Kim and her team have been wonderful about making sure to continue moving forward in that arena until we can get that filled.
I think I have someone else that has a question, but.
I think she may have a follow-up.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ellen.
So just as a follow-up, I see that there is an FTE slotted for that. So are we actively going to go back to recruiting for that?
Yes, the plan is once the administrator role is filled for that recruitment to begin.
Thank you.
Councilmember Maria.
Thank you, Council President Prince. My follow-up to that is why are we having such a hard time recruiting for that particular DEI position? Are we lowballing or what's some of the feedback that we're getting? Because it's been some time now that that position has remained unfilled.
And I would have to get back to you because I wasn't part of that recruitment. So I can reply to you later.
Thank you.
Any other questions on HRRM? Councilmember Yvonne.
Thank you, Council, Council President. Just to follow up on that, regarding to the positions not being filled, have we had any communication with equity commissions and mayor's inclusion task force and just different ways of outreach to the community and posting position versus just online?
We'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
Carrie, I think you can move on to court.
Um, here. So last court has no changes for their budget this year. There are, the only increases that you see there are cost of living increases per the union contract. There is some shifting around with some of their dollars to meet some of their goals, which I'll highlight here in a moment. Again, like finance and HR, a large amount of their budget is personnel-related. The other services and supplies is their small amount of discretionary funds that they're looking to actually move around a little bit to make some changes so that they can focus on tackling some of their goals of language translation services and also some text reminder services. They found that this is two of the areas they feel that that would really be helpful within their department, as well as continuing to make sure they're compliant with all the new laws that are coming forward. I think Shane was be able to, to explain those very well in his last presentation, but they're really going to be focusing on those as well in the next biennium. So they really don't have any budget changes, just making sure that they're focusing on some of these new capabilities to be able to support the current program they have.
Any questions for municipal court? Yes, Councilmember Ellen.
I'm looking at page 327 for municipal court performance measures. And I'm just wondering, for the last four years in every category, there's been no data collected or no data available or?
Yes, so I, I did ask Ryan, who handles the rent and results, about the reason. And I think during COVID, they had a hard time getting the customer service survey out. This is something that they, he was really focusing with them in the last, the last year. But with the transition of one of the senior levels retiring in that position, it was just hard to devote some time to getting that customer service survey off the ground. And so it's definitely something that he will continue to focus on with them to make sure that we can get some feedback there.
Any other questions for municipal court?
Yes, Council President Prince?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to give huge kudos. I love our municipal court system, our community court system. But to draw my colleague's attention at 328, the community court has reached a recidivism rate of approximately 7.6%. I just want to say that's incredible. That's fantastic. I think we're leading in that realm and I think they're doing a lot with little and I just appreciate that. So thank you for covering all of these areas so well and so efficiently, Carrie. Thank you.
So I just wanted to cover next steps. We have a meeting next week. I will go over any changes. We are getting, I just wanted to call it, we are still getting updates from King County on the property tax levy. Every Monday, we get a new one. And so it just decreased $50 this morning. So I think we're pretty close to the number that we have, but I will let you know exactly what that figure is next week at next week's meeting. We will also have all the legislation for you to review at that time and then any other questions to go over. We have our last public hearing this evening and then legislation is slated to begin to, for your feedback on the 4th and 18th.
Thank you, Carrie. Meeting holds adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.